All right, let's go to item number seven. Introduction and First Read Code Amendment Number 23-05, an amendment to Fountain Valley's municipal code 21.08.055 for accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Presentation by Stephen Ayers. And Mr. Ayers, I'm -- we -- come on up, sorry. So we presented this two council meetings ago. Councilmember Kinnin was not here, so we decided to table it. I know that Councilmember Kinnin has viewed the meeting?
Yes, Mayor, I have.
Okay, so instead of giving the same presentation you gave two meetings ago, unless a council member has a question or wants to make a comment, we'll call for a vote.
Is there any change on this presentation prior to the previous one? If there is, perhaps just identify that?
There's no change. Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing first because I don't want to forget to do that. See, this was an easy presentation for you. Public hearing is open, and Mr. Clerk, if you would go ahead and call the speakers.
Katie Wright.
Welcome back, Katie.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council Members. I feel like it's déjà vu all over again. This is not my first time talking on this issue. This is not your first time talking on this issue. This is not the first time numerous citizens have come to this podium talking on this issue. We understand ADUs are part of the state mandate. It is what it is. The very fact that the state only mandates up to 1,000 feet is kind of an indication that let's just leave it at what the state has mandated as the limit. Let's not give someone additional space to monopolize someone else's yard. Because the very presence of those ADUs, when they're that big, they do monopolize, they cast shade. You can say they don't. My neighbor has an automatic motion detector light. I haven't spoken with her yet. I'm sure she's reasonable, we can talk through it. But the fact is, things automatically start happening and irritating neighbors who maybe don't get along as well as me and my neighbor do. Don't let them go to 1,200 feet, please. I know a lot of people want the extra square footage. It's just going to create that many more residents on these streets. We're already having enough trouble parking our cars as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Cheryl Brothers.
After Cheryl will be Andrea Martel, so you're ready to go. Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, I have heard at your earlier meetings that some property owners have property rights. We all have property rights. I have a right to enjoy my single-family residence, which is what I bought into. I understand the state's regulation on this. A new one I heard I'm bringing up tonight is subdividing a lot and selling half of your lot. I hope Fountain Valley can find a way to not do that. More square footage of an ADU automatically means more people, automatically means more cars. Even if they're children, they're going to grow up, they're going to get cars. And as was mentioned, parking is already an issue in some neighborhoods. So I implore you to keep it at 1,000 maximum square feet, and this is what your planning commission has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Andrea Martel, followed by Bill Spear. Bill, you might want to get ready.
So I'm a 34-year resident on Azalea Circle by the Park, and also a retired Realtor. And I understand that this is state-mandated, but my position is that we have yet to see the impact of the high-density housing that we're having to put into Fountain Valley, and the traffic patterns that that will change. And as we add these ADUs, and if they're larger, again, like Cheryl said, we're going to have more cars. Our neighbors who just put one in, they have six cars. They had to put in a special paved lawn in the front yard to park in front of their house to accommodate the cars so they could get the trash trucks through on trash day. And it seems to me that there's no time constraint on when we might increase the square-footage allowance. And it would be better served for the community to wait until we get these high-density units progressing, to see how that affects the community before we add the extra square footage to what's allowable. Because once we add it, we can't take it back. And right now, we have a certain mandate amount, and everybody can do it. But -- and nobody's expecting to get more because it's already the current rule. And I would respectfully suggest that we hold off on this. There's no hurry. I mean, a year or two down the road, we may decide that this is something we need, and that the things are flowing fine, and we can revisit it. But we don't know what the impact of all these high-density housing is going to do. And we are such a small slot of a city in the traffic pattern. So I ask you to consider that as a citizen, and you're my employees who speak for us, and please consider the idea.
Thank you, Andrea.
Bill Spear, followed by Lillian Yao.
I agree with Cheryl, this is not a freedom issue. The federal government, the state government, the county government, the city government put out requirements that impose restrictions on individual rights to balance them against the community, and this is just another one of them. We presented this issue in the housing mandate that we have in many ways over the years, and it's always been, we're going to do what we have to do because the state has told us what we're going to do. And we follow that pretty cleanly along the way, and explain to the members of the community that this is what we're doing because we have to, it's not that we want to. If you took a vote on who wants ADUs in their neighborhood, it would be a very small percentage. But we agree that we're going to follow the state mandate, which is 1,000 square feet. And we've been pretty clear about that in every planning commission meeting and in every city council meeting that I've been in. So it's confusing to me a little bit. A 1,000-square-foot home is a pretty good-sized house. I had a house in Long Beach that was smaller than that, that was two bedrooms, and it was a substantial home. The other thing is, if you're trying in any way influence affordable, size drives affordability of it. And so the bigger you make it, the more expensive it's going to be. That's not going to support that. I'm really confused as to who's kind of driving this. In all the meetings that I've been in, I've never heard a Fountain Valley member come forward and say, please, I want 2,000-square-foot ADUs or 1,500-square-foot ADUs. Nobody's come forward. So wherever they are, they're not attending your meetings, and I'm not sure how they're influencing this even getting up as an issue. So basically, what I'm asking is that you support the 1,000 square feet that's mandated by the state of California, and we agree we're going to follow that. And I also ask the Fountain Valley community that watches this and keeps track of this, that those that vote for this are voting for development above and beyond what the state has mandated in the city of Fountain Valley, and that the next election, we hold people accountable for that, if that's not what you agree with. Thank you.
Lillian Yao, followed by Rudy Hubner.
Welcome, Lillian.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. Lillian Yao, Fountain Valley. I'll just go through my points. As an individual homeowner versus a property investor, I implore you guys to keep it at 1,000 square feet. A friend of mine has a single-family home, two bedrooms, full-size kitchen, adequate living room, dining room, all in 797 square feet. So that's -- 1,000 square feet is more than enough space. The other thing is, it's an accessory dwelling unit. It's not to be a primary, it's to be an accessory. And there might be even homes in Fountain Valley that are 1,100 square feet on a lot. And so would 1,200 square feet really make sense as an accessory dwelling unit? Across from my house, the family moved out, family purchased it, but then immediately converted the garage, the two-car garage, into the two-bedroom kitchenette accessory dwelling unit. So the garage spaces are gone. And then took out the back patio and put in an individual accessory dwelling unit, which was supposed to be for the family, but then, once they couldn't afford it, decided to turn it into a rehab house. So now we've got people coming in and out of that space about every six weeks or so. And the front lawn got -- part of it got changed to the garage spaces. So now, across the street, I get to look at at least six cars, four to six cars parked out in front of the street every day. It's just not part of Fountain -- I don't think that's the direction that Fountain Valley wants to go towards. I've heard of -- and I've driven by group homes, rehab homes in Costa Mesa and in Newport Beach, and it makes me think twice about whether or not I want to move over there. The other thing is that communities are designed so that windows and front doors are community-friendly. So if I'm looking out my window, I have a nice view, I'm not necessarily staring directly into my neighbor's other window. And right now, as I understand it, with ADUs, they might go up, that window might stare right into my bedroom window or something like that. And as I understand it, the amount of space between the wall and the fence is less than what the current houses, the primary houses, need to have. And so, again, it's just as far as an overall planning, just have the big picture in mind. Again, 1,000 square -- 1,000 square feet is more than enough. Let's see, what else? And again, just to reiterate what other people have said, the planning commission heard this twice, they voted unanimously to keep it at a maximum of 1,000 square feet. And I would just like to remind you guys, however this is written, to me, it seemed like a double negative. There was a proposition to expand it at 1,200 or something like that, and it's the proper thing is to deny that expansion. So the goal is to keep it at 1,000 square feet. And I think that takes care of all my points. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lillian.
Rudy Hubner, followed by Anna Katsuki.
Welcome, Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I am Rudy Hubner, and since we didn't get the pleasure of seeing that lovely presentation that we saw two weeks ago, I want to raise a point that the average size of an ADU in Fountain Valley is 839 square feet, which, looking at the numbers, seems to me that the current ordinance with a maximum of 1,000 square feet is sufficient. It's serving the need of folks who are choosing to build ADUs in the city. So given that there doesn't seem to be a prevailing demand to build bigger, it doesn't make sense that we would want to offer beyond what the state is mandating. In addition to that, just to put into perspective the size of 1,000 square feet, because I know when a lot of us picture an ADU in our mind, we're thinking, oh, it's, you know, a little bungalow that's a studio, and it's got a little kitchenette area and a bathroom. I'm buying a condo here in Fountain Valley. I'm so glad, it's my little piece of the city, my American dream coming true. My condo is a two-bedroom, two-bath condo. It's beautiful. And it's 989 square feet. So what we're imagining now is somebody building my entire condo in their backyard, but they're not allocating for any parking. And so just looking at what those numbers actually mean in terms of the square footage, and in terms of what's currently existing in the community, that average of 839 square feet, I say that leaving it at the 1,000-square-foot maximum keeps us in compliance with what's being demanded of the state, and it's meeting the present needs of the community, and therefore should not be modified. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Anna Katsuki.
Mayor Grandis and the City Council, thank you for this opportunity. When Gary and I and our little family decided to move, we were living in 1,100-square-foot home, three bedrooms, two full baths, living room, kitchen, attached garage, a whole house. But we decided to move to a different community. We were looking for a community, we didn't want to live next to apartments, we didn't want to live next to condos. We wanted a single-family home. So we looked at several communities. We went at night, we went on the weekends, we checked the communities we were looking at. And we decided on Fountain Valley. In 1993, we knew our neighbors, we bought a pool, we had a house with a pool. The homes around us were single-family except for one, so we had privacy in our backyard, which we really treasured. Sadly, Sacramento changed this. Now we have monster homes in our neighborhood. I have garages that have been converted into apartments. I don't even know most of these people anymore, which is really sad, but I don't know my neighbors. Under discussion is to expand ADUs to 1,200 square feet. Do I approve of ADUs? No, I don't even approve of an ADU. But I understand that Sacramento says yes, and that sometimes a family member would like parents or their children to live. I can work with that. It's a family, I get it. But that doesn't always happen. The answer is always follow the money. Don't believe for one moment that some of these ADUs are just for family members, that there's going to be all these different people living there. It's all about the money, people. They want to make money. And that's sad because how does that impact us? I know about private property rights, but what about my private property rights? Don't I have any private property rights in the city of Fountain Valley? I know I'm an insignificant member of this community. But why we have to begin with is that we don't want these changes made in our neighborhoods. I mean, right now, I -- like they said, a lot of cars because nobody uses their garages anymore. Now, because you don't know people, I have more renters and stuff. I mean, since then, my house has been broken into, cars are being broken into, the neighborhood has changed. And I'm not saying it's just the ADUs, but we don't know the people living in these ADUs. A 1,200-square-foot ADU is an entire house on a single-family property. And the intent of Fountain Valley was single-family homes, not living in the middle of apartments and condos. I really hope that we keep the size as it is. And remember that I have private property rights also. So I hope you remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Jay Towne. Tracy Cameron will be next.
Welcome, Jay. It's nice to see you in person.
Yeah, well, I thought I might be more effective. With any luck. Hold on, I got to find my notes. Okay, I'm ready. ADU, high-density housing. Hmm, same-o, same-o, as far as I'm concerned. The state of California has done many, many ADU studies. A recent study shows that the effect of ADU development on neighboring property values using an instrumental variable approach found that a point -- a 0.48, less than 1% point increase over a sample period of 2013 to 2021 in ADU density leads to a 3.6 decrease in nearby property values. Nearby property values. My house, if they have an ADU, my house goes down in value. There are many challenges, they also found, there are many challenges to the full realization of ADU potential at the local level. ADUs can be, I did not know this, can be up to 16 feet in height. I think that's two stories. Yeah, eight-foot ceilings, yeah, times two, got it. Okay. Space permits, state regulations allow you to build one attached ADU, one detached ADU, and one junior ADU, all on the same property. ADUs can be converted from almost any accessory structure or space on the property, including garages, attics, and basements. Well, thank God we don't have basements. California state law allows accessory dwelling units up to 800 square feet, 16 feet high, with four-foot yard setback. A one-bedroom ADU can be up to 850 square feet, and an ADU with two or more bedrooms can be up to 1,000 square feet. Not 1,200, 1,000. As people compete, not only for space, but for food, water, and air, the more hostile their behavior becomes. This is all studied by the state. I didn't make this up. Crime and a lack of respect for other people become more common as personal space is reduced. Violence is more prevalent in highly populated areas, as are other forms of criminal behavior. Oh, goodie, isn't this just special? No additional parking requirements, doesn't help arena numbers, annoys our neighbors almost like an Airbnb. They are not mother-in-law units, they are unregulated rental properties. A 1,200-square-foot is bigger than my first three-bedroom house in Lakewood. Adding 200 square feet to an already-existing blight causes me to wonder, where's the win? Is it for my neighbors? No. Is it for my city? No. Is it for my country? No.
Thank you, Jay.
Tracy Cameron.
Welcome, Tracy.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Cameron, I live at 9717 Lima Pola. I really don't have a lot to say that's different than the people who have already spoken. I think what we have now meets the state requirements without exceeding them. It is not necessary for us to do a larger ADU on any of our properties. I don't want 1,000 square feet anywhere on my property. However, I understand the mandates, but I see no need for us to change that and expand it, unless someone is doing it so that they can do it on their property and then rent it out for profit. And that's my major fear, is that it is not, it was developed to be literally a mother-in-law suite, or a family member, maybe my older, I'm too old to have a mother alive, but if I had an elderly mother, a parent, to provide for that person to live near my family. However, because of the way this new thing could go, it would simply be a rental that I could do, or you could do, any of you, put it on your property and rent it to who knows who. And it could be two or three bedrooms, house six, seven people, and all the cars, and all the resources that they would use in addition to just being on your property. I agree absolutely with the prior speakers that we should maintain what we currently have.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other requests to speak?
I have no more requests to speak.
Oh, there's somebody in the audience who would like to speak. You can come on up and speak, just state your name, and we'll ask you to fill out a blue card.
Is this on this item, or is this?
I'm not sure what item it is.
We're on ADUs right now, is this?
If it's something separate, it's for something related to --
That's not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, we'll call you later. It's not the right time, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on this matter? Not seeing anyone? I've closed the public hearing at this point. Let's hear from council, does anybody want to start?
Well, I'd like to speak, actually, since we didn't have the presentation. We don't have any requirements that residents have to know their neighbors. Property owners may have up to three ADUs at one residence, just that's the way the state, Sacramento, has made it. And only one style of, and please, staff, if I'm not saying something correct, please correct me, only one style of ADU has any parking requirements. Even with the general plan update, we've got the same thing, and the fact that there's a bus stop in the proximity, that's why. And that's the way housing is going these days, whether ADUs or high-density, as we've been hearing, that's the trend. Let's see here. I have to clean this up.
And one quick comment, I do want to be fair. I opened up with if anybody wants to see the presentation, so if you --
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity, if anybody wants to see it, I'm more than willing to let staff --
More people, more vehicles, it's not a given. You know, why people do ADUs? We're not the housing police up here, we're really not. I am going to vote no on it, though. I don't believe it should be increased. Thank you.
Okay, that would have saved a lot of time last minute, but who's next? Anybody else want to make a comment?
Mayor, can I just make a few comments?
Sure.
And I appreciate the ability to see this on video. I actually waited till this morning to watch the March 19th so it'd be fresh for this conversation. And I also want to commend other speakers that came. Former planning commissioner Mary Ellen Esker was here, I appreciate that. I also received multiple emails and some calls, and the majority of those are basically, leave what we have in place. I do want to ask a couple of questions of staff, and the one question that I'm getting and I'm hearing is, what is an SB9 ADU? We talked about ADUs, junior ADUs, you know, attached, detached, but can staff help with the SB9? And if not, we can talk about that later. But this seems to be another wrinkle in ADU.
Welcome, Omar.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. So SB9 is a separate piece of legislation that allows, under circumstances, certain circumstances, for a property owner to split their property and to then create another primary unit. So in essence, you could have, if you meet the requirements, you could have a primary unit. If it gets split off into two, under SB9, you could have two primary units, and then each one of those could have their own ADUs as well, for those three units. So you could go from one property with one unit to two properties with six units.
Thank you. And I think the other complexity with land use and just figuring out what's allowable is what's called FAR, that's that floor-area ratio. It gets very complicated. The lots in Fountain Valley vary. We have some that are 6,000, some that are 72,000 square feet, some that are larger. And each one is kind of unique because of that calculation. And so there is, there's a .55, if I understand, requirement. And so I think what's best, to my way of thinking, is a lot of hard work has been put into this ordinance 1603, and I think there's still unknown questions, like we just talked about SB9, and what does that mean? So at this point, I say we let stand what's in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bowie, do you want to make any comments?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Well, there was a comment that there are real estate company or investment company coming to Fountain Valley to build ADU to make money. Well, in the last three years, data-wise, we have 420 applications. Of that 420 applications, company-wise, it's .019%. There's 91% Pacific Islander that apply, and the other applicants are 8.98%. And keep in mind, one of the challenges as a city that we have to go through every year, well, we carry fixed costs that increase every year for providing the excellent servers to our community. What do you want? And what are the servers? First responder, we want excellent responders, we don't want to lose our fire department, we don't want to lose our PD. Well, that costs money to the city. And we want excellent customer service, we want to retain our employee. Well, that costs money to the city every year. Show me any city that decreased on that cost. I don't think there's any. It kept increasing every year. And the difference, the 200 square feet, what does it comprise of in term of lost tax revenue opportunity? Well, if 200 square feet and today's pricing to build per square foot, let's say $230 a square foot average, let's say we have 200 ADU built, that's $92 million annually income revenue, plus a 1% increase avenue, 1% increase in property tax that the city. Now, we have heard that this is not a constitutional issue, maybe, but us as a city council, we were sworn an oath to protect the US Constitution and the California Constitutions and the Bill of Rights. Didn't we all? I think we all sworn on that. I'm referring to the Fifth Amendment on the US Constitution. I'm referring to the Fifth Amendment on the U.S. Constitution. Unregulate property. Well, we don't have short-term rental property in Fountain Valley. We do not have short-term rental. Okay, so.
I'm sorry, if, we can't have any comment. The public hearing is closed. Everyone has had a chance to speak. If everyone keep the murmuring down, that would be helpful, please. Thank you.
In reference to property that have the right or decide to build a junior ADU, well, there's a lot of covenant recording requirement. What does that mean exactly? Well, one is referenced to is if you are a property owner and you want to build a junior ADU, there's a lot of string attached to it. What are they? Well, you cannot sell the property separately from the main dual unit. You cannot lease that ADU if it's less than 30 days. The covenant shall run with the land. And if the future property owner comes in and buy it, let's say, an investor or a real estate company comes in and want to rent it out, well, guess what happened to that? Investors or business owners. Well, it's recording his covenant. He can't do it. He's going to get fined, or he has to remove that junior ADU. So there's a lot of restriction in it. It's not that's one, two, or three. Now, I've heard that you could build three ADU on the property. Yes, providing that you, there's a lot of code restrictions once you exceed 800 square feet. There's setback requirement. There's building code requirement. And if those doesn't, doesn't meet, guess what happened when it goes to planning committee, to planning check? It comes back. Doesn't get approved. Your lot coverage doesn't have it. So to say that you are allowed to build, that's not true. It depends on the lot size. Not every lot size will get approved. Next one is, I have heard I'm looking at my notes here. So I feel that it is, at the end of the day, not everyone's good bill 1,200, but the options should be leave it at the property owner. That is my point on this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, Mr. Attorney for the City, I think we, nobody has left, and we made an exception for Mike White. Should we make another exception for somebody who might want to speak at this point, or are we too late? Okay, so I'm going to, I love this gavel, reopen the public hearing. Susan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, I was late this evening, and I just got here, and I heard that it's already been closed, so I have to speak. As of three months ago, there was construction five feet from the other side of our fence, our backyard fence, with a new ADU. We don't know it's finished, or at least the exterior is finished. They did a very nice design. If I lived in an ADU, I would like to live in that ADU. I don't know what they've done inside, but exterior, it looks very nice. However, it's on five feet from the other side of our backyard. Today, when I pulled out of our, my garage, there's a stack of wood across the street from another property that is about to build an ADU. Here's the problem that I see. And listen, I'm not opposed to people, what they do with their own property, that's one thing. However, Fountain Valley, Ted, is a bedroom community. I have lived in Manhattan. I have lived in San Francisco. I have lived in Portland. We do not want a metropolitan city. We do not want a concrete jungle. We want to maintain the quality of life is the reason that we brought here, for good schools, for good neighbors. That's what we want. People who are coming here and building ADUs are looking for rental properties. Let them go to metropolitan cities. I have visited Hong Kong. I have been in Seoul, Korea. I have been to those cities. That's not what Fountain Valley is. That's not what we want. Your constituents, the people that voted you, are saying to you, we don't want it. We don't want it. I don't need to make a buck off other people when the quality of our life, when we drive to a grocery store, we don't want to compete with other drivers trying to get in and out of those parking lots. We're dealing with issues now that are in other cities. That's not what Fountain Valley is, and that's not what we want. So please, guys, do it differently.
Thank you, Susan.
I want to make a point of clarification, if I may.
Okay, before you do, I'm officially going to close, and I'm not going to reopen the public comments. Public comments are now closed. Thank you.
So here's the thing. I'm just so over this. I agree with Vice Mayor Bowie about wanting these. I'm going to vote no, though, like I said. But I do believe there's really not that much difference between 1,000 square feet and 1,200. The public doesn't want the ADUs. I totally get it. And ADUs could be done in a way that they're thoughtful to the neighbors, and apparently, they're not completely, you know, so. But to assume that people are going to rent them out, that's not our business up here. That's not our business. Thank you.
Okay, anybody? Councilmember Harper, please.
Yeah, I'd like to move alternative number two. Do not approve the attached ordinance approving the change in the ADU. So basically, leave things as they are.
I'd like to make a little comment.
Please.
I wanted to make a little comment, and if I could have either Steve Ayers to hear, or Omar Dina Boyes to hear.
They're both here.
Okay, great. I just want to, from my understanding, if we leave the way it is, there are certain rules in there that doesn't, that will allow a property owner to build an attached ADU, a detached ADU, and a junior ADU, providing that if they do a junior ADU, they will have a required covenant to their property if we, if we adopt tonight. Unless, unless this is what I'm proposing as a compromise. The current setback right now is four feet from the property line. Is that correct? Yes. Giving the four-feet setback with all those options on the 7,200 average lot in Fountain Valley currently is average 72, you could build all those three. All right? So the compromise is, that's why I say for those who wants to build 1,200 ADU, I'd like to see that we can increase the property line setback from four feet to eight feet setback, and then enact the lot coverage, protecting green landscape, and set a max limit of three-bedroom. That will give an appealing. And that way, it will prevent from enacting all those three options that I mentioned. If you adopt the way it is right now, one can build all those three, which is a lot more than increasing the 1,200 square feet.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, so let's first see if there's a second, and then we could do a substitute motion and see if you get a second. I think that's the way we're supposed to do it.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second from Jim Kinnon. Do we hear a substitute motion? Vice Mayor Bowie, do you want to make a substitute motion?
Yes, I make it, I want to make a substitute motion that, as a compromise, for those who wants to build a 1,200 ADU, I'd like the ordinance to reflect from a four-feet setback to an eight-feet setback to, for those who say, I don't want my neighbor to look, you know, close to my property. Well, I have a setback of eight feet. And enact a lot, a lot coverage. What that does is it requires more greenery in the backyard.
Okay, you're making a substitute motion, so.
Yeah, so that's part of it. It has to include all that.
Okay.
And with a, with a set max limit of three-bedroom.
Is there a second for the substitute motion? I do not hear a second for the substitute motion, so we'll go back to the first motion, but I do want to make one comment before we vote on this. One thing, I understand your passion. I understand your points that you're making. One thing that I don't agree with, you brought up the fact that 91% of the people who are applying for ADUs are Pacific Islander heritage. With that, if you're insinuating in some way that we're being unfair to Pacific Islanders, I would 100% disagree with that. If we said, we'll do it, but unless you're a Pacific Islander, then that's discriminating against a particular heritage. But in this case, I don't see that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I don't think it necessary to bring up ethnicity. I was a little bit taken aback.
Yeah, no, the point I'm trying to say is, I'm a pointer on the facts that who are the applicants, because they were saying that there was, you know, investment company and real estate company. Well, if I give data, I have to give all the data, not just one specific data.
Okay, if that's what you were doing, then that's fine. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let's call for the vote, please. Oh, hold on. Before we do this, let's, I pushed too fast, so clear mine out. Lillian Yao brought up a great point. Let's just reconfirm which way we're voting and how we're supposed to vote. So if we vote yes, we want to go to 1,200 feet. If we vote no, we want to keep it at 1,000 feet.
The, the current motion is to approve alternative number two. Do not approve the increase to 1,200 feet. The ADU, so approving that is approving ADUs remaining at 1,000 square feet.
Okay, so voting yes is keeping, okay, I'm glad we clarified that. I voted correctly. All right, we're good to go.
Just need Vice Mayor Bowie to vote.
All right, it's one for clarifications. Once again, I, I'm going to, not going to vote yes or no. I'm abstaining on this one because I believe the, you know, the U.S. constitutions, you know, and the protecting of those rights.
Okay, just for clarification, abstain is if you have no opinion, don't want to vote, et cetera. Yes or no is either approve or you disapprove. So this one, you're saying you have no opinion, then?
That's right.
Okay, very good.
The motion to approve alternative number two passes 4-0 with one abstention by Vice Mayor Bowie.
All right, very good.